All right, so being 6:30 on Wednesday, April 6th and having Quorum, I'll open the Bridgewater Planning Board meeting. The first item on the agenda is 86 Spring Street. This is the 86 Spring Street Revocable Trust. It's a special permit continuation. And I believe.
Letter from.
Is it in the packet or do you have it up there? So we received a continuation letter on March 31st, 2022 to the Bridgewater Planning Board. This is a request for extension. Dear Planning Board, please accept this letter as a request to extend the public hearing for the addition of 86 Spring Street to May 4th, 2022. We are preparing some substantial changes which I hope to enable your board to support the plan. The changes were more time consuming than anticipated and we certainly want your staff to have adequate time to review and provide comments prior through the hearing. Thank you, Milton Morris. So. We have room on the agenda for the fourth?
Yes.
So if the board would like to accept the continuation, do we have a continuation? A motion to continue to May 4th, 2022 at 6:30?
So moved.
By Mr. Geller?
Second.
I'm Mr. Jemian. All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
That was, I'm sorry, at 6:30?
Correct. So next on the agenda is another public hearing. I'll open the public hearing for 24 Bedford Street. This is an application by Chris Fabroski. It's a site plan review. Mr. DeBoerman, do we have the public hearing notice? We received the green cards?
Um, I didn't, he showed them to me, but I don't have them in here.
And we do, will we do have an about his list?
Yes.
Can you show, can you, can you just get those green cards?
But he did show them to me.
So why, Jennifer, do you want me to explain what we're looking to waive tonight?
Sure.
Or do you want to?
I can while I'm looking for this.
So, Mrs. DeBoeran and I talked. If you guys recall, Mr. Fabroski, Steve, I don't think you're here, got this approved in, I believe it was June of 2018. And started the process, had to get a DOT permit, I believe. And COVID hit, which delayed him for a while and DOT was closed for one full year. And. And he decided to change the building. I don't know if you remember the building, Ray might remember. It was a steel building. And he's, he has since built one on Route 18 next to the dentist office. That's more of a wood type of building. Shingle and things like that. So you changed the design which we received for that. So there was an oversight in the in him asking us for an extension. So Mrs. DeBoeran and Mr. Fabroski talked. And they determined the cleanest way to do this was because it had expired. Mr. Solari couldn't issue a permit so that it would come back to the planning board for review. Mrs. DeBoeran asked Mr. Tanzi to review what Nick Lanning had already reviewed. That's why he saw some HML comments. And they worked out the issues. Mr. Fabroski paid for all the advertising and any costs associated with it. But what you're looking for us to do this evening is waive the fee that we normally charge because of the circumstances?
The filing fee.
Okay. So before we continue, we don't have a fee for filing and for engineering, but because of the circumstances that we had talked about, Mrs. DeBoeran suggested that we vote on a fee later for those two things. This is a plan we already approved.
Make a motion to waive with the fees based on your.
Just, just, just those fees, correct?
Just those two fees based on extending circumstances as stated this evening.
So move.
Because we usually don't waive fees. And I've always said we don't waive fees, but with the DOT with COVID and with the hang up and get the design changed, I think it makes sense. So. So a motion by Mr. Jemian to, Mr. Jemian to waive the fees. Do you second this? By Mr. Geller? All in favor?
All right.
Received the green cards. And then we just have the public hearing notice to the Bridgewater Planning Board on Wednesday, April 6th, 6:30 PM. And the Bridgewater Planning Board will be conducting a public hearing. And the council chamber is 66 Central Square, Bridgewater, Mass. On an application by Chris Fabroski for site plan approval under section 9.8, properties located at, is that 2A or 24? Should be 24A. 24A Bedford Street, map 88, lot 93. The project proposes to construct a 4,500 square foot commercial building with associate infrastructure. The plans were prepared by Frank Gallagher Engineering in Foxborough and dated February 21st, 2018. Last revised February 14th, 2020, and are in the Community Economic Development Office. This was published on 3/23/22 and 3/30/22. And we do have the about his notice and Mrs. DeBoeran has seen the green cards. So. So I don't know if you want to give a, we put it up, if you want to give a project overview and tell us what's changed.
Just about every.
What, let's bring, let's, let's bring the plan up. And we do have the revised building renderings now, I believe. And I have them in my packet. Yes, it must be in that file.
Which page? You want the first page or?
Can you spell it?
I'm going to try. Right click.
Go for view.
Right click on the picture and I think it should let you right click with the mouse. Right click. I think it'll say flip. Rotate or take clockwise. Yeah. Or twice. You see that?
So like, this is previously approved plan. I have steel building originally. Better looking building. Adjustments with the changes with the, you know, the recent engineer look at it. They go through quite a hard time with the COVID and the MFP shutdown. I had to wait over a year for that application to be approved. Other than having the same authority previously approved.
So Mr. Tanzi, do you want to talk about your review and the issues in the letter and where we are now with it?
Yeah. When I, when I took it over, it was hard to determine what, what the status of it was. I know that Nick Lanning had reviewed it late in May of 2018. The board had acted upon it and and approved on it, approved it in June of of 2018, early June. But I didn't, at that time, when I wrote my first comment letter, I didn't have some of the notes or letters that came from HML. Actually, it was an email. And it looked like there were some things that were done in first HML letter. And it looked like there are some other things that weren't, but apparently Nick Lanning of HML did review that second plant submission and did satisfy comments that he had made in that first letter. The second email that he sent, he in HML, Nick Lanning indicated that that it had been satisfied and that the conditions of the board also have that. My, my review comments. I did notice that the ADA space had to be brought into compliance. It was not very accessible. And now it is. And they also provided spot grades on the access aisle to make sure that it complies with the current ADA. The slopes were a little bit off. The town of Bridgewater takes ADA compliance very seriously. I even had a meeting, an introductory meeting with the ADA board here in in Bridgewater last week. And I let them know that, you know, we all are working to make sure that everything complies. So they got that in compliance and again, Mr. Lanning was happy with the drainage system. I did ask them to provide a little bit more detail on drainage system, primarily the catch basin and also a construction sequencing plan. Just to make sure that erosion is kept under control and that you don't get high traction though, not to pitch. So that they added a detail of stabilized entrance and a few other things.
Great. Any staff comments, acceptable to what you made in your own?
No, I recommend just approving it with the same conditions as approved in 2018.
Any board comments or questions?
So I wasn't, I wasn't on during the first time. So this is the first one looking at these. The building size stayed the same, exact. Yes, okay. And your proposal of in the back of the building being all stone dust. But you have doors that are, if you go to the floor plants, which, which I saw, you have doors egressing out the back of the building?
Correct. Dumpster use or, you know, access from the back.
So vehicles can pull back there?
So what you did, like, you know, even a couple of the other buildings, I've done it, you know, for access to get around to the dumpster and for that nature, yes.
I'd like for you to consider putting a sidewalk along the back of that building. So people going in and out won't track your stone dust into your building and egress onto a solid piece of concrete versus.
Pad at the end of the exterior of the doors.
Something. I just, I just think it's a little cleaner look. If you, if you're.
We don't use that, but, you know, basically for general need.
Yeah, I just don't know who you're, who you're leasing this to. Right. You know, I just think it's a little cleaner that you, you at least have them walk out onto a pad. I mean, it'd be nice if we put a sidewalk the whole length, but I'm fine with a pad.
If you look at A5 on the, on the architectural plan, you have that architectural plan in front of it. Can you go to A5?
I don't.
Have you, am I seeing things or are there concrete pads that? Showing.
Frankly, I've done this particular building. I usually put a pad anyway. So.
Yeah. See those, see those pads?
I don't know if that actually shows anything, but the little lines.
It's not. I don't think so. No, just, those are just the door openings. The dotted line is your grade. So you'd be stepping down onto it anyway. So I think you should. It's fine.
But if you go back to the site plan, there's a monolithic burn there anyway, right? So you're driving over the monolithic burn.
Burn continues to pop out, yes.
Greg, do you see any issues with that? Are you okay with the way it's designed?
No, I don't see any issues.
And we're not proposing any parking lot light, lighting?
We do it on the build, I have building lighting.
And that's not required in the pack lot, Mr. Tanzi, the pack lot lighting?
The lighting was.
The four wall packs?
Yeah, that was a previous comment with HML. Apparently there wasn't any lighting at first and they proposed the four wall packs that you see right now. And they're deemed to be adequate. I don't have any problems with you know, with the wall pack lighting. Really, you know, the, the two in the back, I really put more for a security. One to the, to the back and one to the north or to the right. As you see the plan, that would be more for security reasons rather than for pedestrian access. But where those wall pad lights are on the south side of the building, the building facing Route 18, that, that lighting should be more than adequate to.
I mean, I could add a couple of wall backs. I have control of that. The new LED ones that they have, that were quite.
Yeah. I don't like light trespass off the property line anyway. I wouldn't want glare going off onto Bedford Street. I mean, the light is really concentrated where it really needs to be on that front sidewalk and at the front, front door, every parking spaces, one through 12. It's going to be enough. There's going to be some light coming off of Bedford Street anyway. So why, why introduce glare into Bedford Street? So I, you know, HML didn't have an issue with it and I didn't really see an issue with it either.
Okay. So the, the plan that I'm looking at right now, the entrance is a little different than the plan that's up there.
Oh.
So it's the plan I'm looking at, plan number two. So you're showing the entrance on this plan is where spots, where spots one and two are. Is that what the plan is to be?
Right here?
Yeah. Yeah.
So is one of those updates, is one of those updated from your comments, Greg? Because they both, they both show a different location for the, for the sign too. That's why.
The one that you're looking at there is the updated one.
That's the updated right there.
That's the one that was. Yeah, I think it, it looks like the other one.
This one here is the updated one.
Yeah, if you.
The way that the entrance goes out, because you know, how far it comes to the, to the exit.
Okay.
So we had to push it over for the.
Oh, for your curb cuts? Okay. And that's where the state approved it right there?
That's the state approved.
Yeah, if you, if you scroll up a little bit. The other way, I'm sorry, down. You, you can see the, the baseline stationing.
Yep.
Out on Bedford Street, MASTOT requires that curb to be identified or located off that baseline stationing. So that's why I knew that this is the one that had to have been approved.
And, and the last thing I have is where the handicap ramp is in the middle? Does that have to be at the end closest to the handicap parking space? Are we okay with a person in a wheelchair willing across the park onto the center of the walkway? Or does the end of the walkway also need to be ramped?
Well, the end of the walkways, as I understood it, is, is flush with the pavement.
Yeah, so the two, the two ends will flush out.
Okay.
In the middle as well.
There were an elevations 100.5 in the park lots where? Is it the same elevation as the park lot?
Yes, at the end of the ramp there.
Because, because the handicap ramp in the center is 100 times 100.7, right? So it's two inches lower on either end? Am I reading that right?
Yeah, it's two tenths lower. It, it's going to go up from 100, 100, 100.5. It'll go up probably.
So that goes, that goes up, right?
Yeah, probably to about 100.9 or something. Then it ramps down to 107. And then it, it, it's 185 as you enter into the building and then up into 101.
So is, is the end of that walkway going to have those built in bumps, rumble strips? You know what I'm talking about? To the blind, the handicap.
The condition that to have that.
Isn't it supposed to? By code? It should be in the front also.
If it's supposed to by code, then Steve Solari will require.
Okay, yeah. I mean, one of the conditions was that's in there is that it has to conform to ADA. So if Steve thinks of all that, he wants a you know, a detection strip at the end of the walkways. I'll just have to put it in.
So just before we get out there, as an issue, one of your comments was the drainage inlet and outlets weren't identified, their elevations on the plan. Has that been updated on the, on the most recent plan?
Yes.
So that we know that the drainage is going to function properly?
Right.
There's also some, you said some shield runoff or some sheet runoff? Potential to a body of property that's been addressed? But those were all addressed with the HML comments?
Right.
And it's just, we weren't seeing those because they weren't updated on the plan or?
Um, I didn't have HML's final email. And it looked like it without that email, I couldn't tell whether things had been updated or not. I thought that they weren't, but.
But did those things from the final email of them make it to the plan? Because we want, we want them on the approved plan, right?
Right. They, they are on the approved plan. In fact, there's more information on the approved, on this plan that you're going to approve because they added my comments as well to that plan. It was a little bit awkward when, when you transitioned from one project that had been doing it for a couple of years. It's hard to pick up where.
And I, and the way I was reading it, when you said common 18 wasn't satisfied, I thought they didn't update the plans and get them to us, but they did.
I'm good. Thank you.
Mr. McGowan? Do we have any public comment? This is no more board comment. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Mr. Geller, second by Mr. Jemian. All in favor?
All right.
I want to post. All right, so. Do we want to discuss it and make a motion? Do we want to talk about the addition? So we could you bring up the decision letter that we signed back in 2018? Have any of these changed in your opinion or satisfied? Or do we need to add it? Are there any conditions in order like that? Mr. Geller, do you want to add the pads in the rear?
Just the pads in the rear.
Like a certain size or?
No, I'll, I'll trust that he knows what I'm talking about.
So concrete pads will be added, a concrete.
Each door, because it's, they're six foot wide doors. So his pad's going to be.
For one, one plan shows a single door and another plan shows a double door.
Yeah, the elevation show.
It'll be as wide as the double doors.
Okay. Any other lighting? Do we want to keep the same condition we're doing with lighting in terms of down lighting?
Yeah.
The, the new LEDs are all down lighting on the buildings now anyway, so they don't project.
Do you want to just put that in there to be consistent?
Number eight, site lighting shall be erected in the manner to prevent glare on nearby properties.
Does it specific, specific for the number of them?
Again?
Am I, do I have to state the number of lights that it is?
If it's shown on the plans, yes.
Are we good with that condition for lighting? And do we want to change that?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure he's going to have to add some building lighting anyways, just by code. So it's not just the four wall packs that he's going to put on there. You know, all the egress is locked up lighting, but that's up to Mr. Solari.
Leaving it alone or adding down lighting?
I know they have one front. I'd like to spread out too, to be honest. If, if, you know. The, the new lights compared to this previous thing where they're done with the old elegant lights and they're much different. If I need, whatever state for the one.
We're talking about using dark skies in the future. If you want down lighting or something like this.
The previous lights projected out, new LEDs now are basically a down key and they just light much differently than the previous ones. And this plan was 2018.
So is it as simple as just saying site down lighting shall be erected in the manner to prevent glare?
Well, it, it says in number eight, you know, erected in the manner to prevent glare on those budding properties. So it's going to be downlighted. If it shoots over, he's going to have to put shields on them anyways. Because he'll be, he won't be compliant with number eight. So it is going to be downlit. I don't have an issue with him wanting to spread it out in the front to give more of an even flow across the front of lighting. But again.
I know the two budding buildings as well, so I'll be all right with it.
Are we good with any of the other? Are we, are we good with that? Moving on from that condition, are we good with that, Mr. Jemian?
Right, as long as we understand it's down lighting.
I continue. Go down a little more, please. A little more. There's 18 of them, right? An 18 satisfied, Greg, but we'll leave it there just to make sure. Want to remove it?
Yeah, I would, I, I think you can remove that. I, I think that's been, that's the one thing that.
Because you've already discussed those, right?
Right. One thing that we did for the project across the street with the lighting. We specified a color temperature. I think it was below 4,000 degrees Kelvin, which would go a long way in help reducing the, the glare. Some, some of these lights have a, have colored temperatures upper between four and five. And they tend to get very bright. You know, that's something that you may want to consider. I mean, that's what we did for the, for 900 Bedford Street, the big warehouse.
Just to keep the lighting in that area all kind of the same?
Yeah. I think that's just a suggestion.
But that's on that?
I think it's a good suggestion. Yeah, I agree with that.
Do you want to just change? Then that gives them a little flexibility in the number of things he puts on there just to stay below 4,000?
I, I think it'd be a, a, a good.
That'll match up with across the street?
Yeah, and it'll also.
Would you word that as a not to exceed 4,000? Okay?
Yeah.
Just where you go 3,035, it's kind of, you start to get a little, you start to get a little lower. It gets more of a yellowish tinge. So.
I mean, that's what we've been doing with lighting, just to keep it consistent around town. So. All right. So remove 18, right? And we'll change eight to, you'll have a little flexibility with the number they can use, but we'll keep it to four thousand or under. Lumens, is that correct, Greg?
Yes, yeah, degrees Calvin.
And it, and it'll be downlight.
Right.
You okay with that?
Fine with that.
Any other conditions? No other conditions. Do we have a? Motion to either approve or deny? And if we approve, we'll just send the conditions plus the ones discussed this evening. And also in the two thousand and eighteen approval. Minus number eighteen.
So move, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I'm Mr. So much by Mr. Gallas, second by Mr. McDonald. Do you have an idea of everything we talked about? So conditions, what to remove, what to add? Any discussion? All in favor?
I. Thank you.
All set, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So Michael, now that you're here, I'm gonna recuse myself from one sixty-one Summer Street.
Okay.
But we, we can do other stuff and then come back. You might wait a few minutes so I can leave. Or do you want me to leave and I'll leave? How's that? Then call me when you.
I mean, the other things probably aren't gonna take that long when it's up to you.
No, just walk outside, so that way we don't have to keep them here.
Rossa, Rebecca, you're up. Rebecca from Silver Engineering. We're here because we or the university did some value engineering after seeing the cost estimates to do some of the elements. If we can pull up page two, I can start with some of the simple changes. There's a handicap ramp, and if you zoom in on the building, you can see it a little bit better. The, the handicap ramp was a very large cost with the railings and the. So instead of a twelve percent ramp that would require handrails, which was thirty thousand dollars. We decided to change the ramp to be a five percent slope, so it's a sidewalk. So we're gonna change the grade, it's just gonna be concrete and no railings. So we've saved the university thirty thousand dollars in handrails. While we were making those changes, we were also asked by the landscape architect to bump the driveway away from the tree. So it has a better chance of surviving. So we lost a few parking spots as we reduced the pavement. We added a sidewalk for safety coming up from Summer Street to the new ADA sidewalk and ramp. And we in, in, increased the patio in front and made it a little more beautiful and accessible. And we lost a little bit more pavement on the Spring Street side. So again, they could have a little bit more landscaping buffer over there too. That was it. We lost four parking spaces, which we didn't need to meet zoning. And we've reduced, we've balanced the pavement, so there's no increase to impact the drainage. And we're here seeing if you'll approve these as a minor and allow the university to continue.
Any comments from staff?
Um, no, I looked at it and I think that it was, I would consider this minor modification. Um, I think I briefly showed it to Greg and I don't think you had issues with the, the changes as proposed, I don't want to speak for you, but. So I would argue the board can deem them minor.
Yeah, I also agree. It's most likely a minor modification, so I, we have a motion on whether it's a proven as a minor or sorry, to consider it a minor or a major.
Based on what I've heard and seen, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, we look at this as a minor modification.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Now you have to decide whether you want to approve it.
I mean, I don't see any issue with it, so I.
I just, Mr. Tans, I just like your comment on what was, it seemed to me that it's a good move, but any, any comments on this?
No, I, I didn't. I took, I did take a, a quick look at it. When I was in Jennifer's office and. I, I didn't see any issues with it. I mean, there, there's definitely some benefits there. They're saving the tree, they're reducing the amount of impervious area on the site.
Sidewalk.
Saving the university some, some money. I. From, from a technical standpoint, I don't have any issues with it.
Saving trees and saving impervious area is, is good. Saving the university money, it's.
I thought you was gonna say saving the universe.
But I mean, I. I, I didn't have any technical issues with it.
I'll make a motion to approve the minor modification.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, thank you. Can I leave you the my line?
Yeah.
Thank you. And Ashley will come tomorrow to pick it up. Uh, yeah, I don't need it now.
Thank you.
Maybe I should have stayed out there. All right, so. So we had discussed, so next to the agenda, we discussed a lot release prior to setting a bond for old North Estates. Mrs. DeBoeran, do you want to give us an update on this?
Sure, so, um, we got a request from the developer, it's the audience seeming. To release one lot prior to setting a bond because our next meeting is not for a month. And he'd like to get started building what I believe is going to be his own personal home. And Greg has already done a bond estimate, but I believe there's, they want to review it, maybe have some conversation with very well a couple items before we set that bond. So he asked if he could put this on, the board has in the past released one lot at, for certain subdivisions without setting a bond. Did it for Old Field, you did it for Crimson Heights. Those are two recent ones that I can remember off the top of my head. You just condition those that they cannot receive an occupancy permit until the bond is placed and the road is completed.
So there's two, there's two lots in there, right?
There's a two lot section, that's correct.
Was it one or two you're looking to release?
Lot number one.
Is it, is it lot number one? Are you, you okay with that, Mr. Tansy? Comfortable?
Yes, I would be okay with that because. The other lot is worth more than what the bond estimate was set at.
And we'll just do what we did in the past. I think we did it for Mr. Bajenga on South Farm as well.
She did it also in South Farm Estates, that's correct.
Do we still need a covenant for lot two?
So the other issue is, I don't believe a covenant was reported on the subdivision. I could not find one at the registry deeds. So what I would suggest is that we require a covenant be reported for lot number two. As soon as possible.
Prior to the issue and to the building permit for lot one? Is that how you word it?
Yes, that's how we would word it. And I can provide the homeowner with a form, that simple form to fill out that can be reported in the next area too, so it's not an issue.
But then we release the covenant when the bond's placed anyway, right?
Yes.
But discussion?
Plan of me.
Is it actually lot, are they called lot one or A or B? What are they, what are they called? So is that a motion to release or to allow you to sign off on a building permit? Well, how should the motion be worded? Because of the covenant?
The form anyway, and I just, instead of where the covenant is, I put the decision information, because the decision is recorded, so he can take this to the registry deeds. That's how I did it.
All right, so is the motion to release? Or is the motion to allow you to sign off on a building permit?
I would do that. They're not releasing it from anything, because there's no covenant being held on the slot.
Somebody want to make that motion?
If I can figure out how to word it.
Yeah, I'm a little confused now.
So typically, I think, I think what happened was is.
Normally, developer, when they record the decision and the plans after they're approved, they would report a covenant. It's required in our subdivision control. In this case, that step slid by, that did not happen. They recorded the plans and the decision, but not the covenant. So we don't have a covenant on these two lots.
The property was approved by Quail Hollow. Recorded then sold. So, so Quail Hollow should have recorded the covenant. They didn't. Mr. Costa bought it. The covenant's on, so he's, so his part of doing this, we're gonna make him put the covenant on there.
It's all fine. How do you word it?
Oh. I didn't know you were looking at me for, I would just make them, I have to make a motion to allow the community development director to sign off on the building permit. Once a covenant has, proof of covenant recording has been provided for lot number two.
So move.
The motion by Mr. Jimmy?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. McDonald. I just make one condition to that release is that. With all the others we've done, we've said that you can't get occupancy permit until the bond's placed. So. That gives them plenty of time though. Are we okay accepting that as a? So we have a motion to release lot one and the second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thanks.
We want to come by the office tomorrow and give you the form that you need to record. Okay, thank you.
Try not to wear my glasses, because it takes static when I wear, but I can't see whatever.
It's broken.
I have an eye appointment next week.
I think there's tape in here maybe.
No, they're fine. I just saw myself on TV and I go, wow, I look ridiculous. So a couple of meetings ago, we talked about a. New representative from the planning board joining, joining the CPC Community Preservation Committee. Mr. Gallas, did you, or did you not express interest?
I did.
Does anybody else have interest?
The date doesn't work for me unfortunately, so.
What's that?
The date unfortunately doesn't work for me, so I think Mr. Gallas would be a great candidate for that.
I was at one time, and I think, no, I think that it's a good, it's an important committee and that, yeah, we need a good man to be there.
I think Steve has some good design experience, you know, with playgrounds and landscapes and lighting and, you know, just so you can see it tonight, so. Are you willing to do it?
Yes.
You keep asking him, he's gonna say no.
Do we have a motion to appoint? Yes. Do we have a motion to appoint somebody?
I'll make the motion to appoint Steve to the community preservation, as Lee is on.
I'll second. Second by Mr. McDonald. All in favor?
Hi.
Mr. doesn't know that tomorrow.
This unit boss.
Yep, I will let him know tomorrow. I'll send this tomorrow. I just have that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any? Board of committee reports? Do we want to talk about Mrs. Barrett's letter or Judy Barrett's letter?
Um, I don't think you should talk about it. I just wanted to let me know, I sent you the email. Steve already actually got back to me if, with, as you remember last week, there was a couple language changes that she was gonna provide to the board for either yes or no or any other feedback. So she did that yesterday, so I sent that out this morning. If you have comments, send those back to me. There was one item that did get changed under the open space conservation development section. But it's that, so this is an updated version of what I emailed you earlier today, so. That's the only thing that changed on it is the open space conservation element, so. Just take a look at those and get that back to me. They're asking for comments back by Monday, maybe eleven, so. Yes or no, or, I hate this, this is what I want you to say, so.
Well, can we, I mean, can we talk about one of these now?
It's not really on the agenda, but.
Just where this is your report? Can we discuss your report? Well, well, I mean, the hot button one was the, the adaptive reuse.
Yep.
So. I don't know if we just want to throw it out altogether, or do we want to consider that language that she provided? So she provided language saying explore the feasibility of developing an adaptive reuse ordinance for the preservation of historical significant structures with design guidelines. Do we want to, we struck the other language. Do we want to strike that or do we want to leave it?
I was fine with it.
We can always add it back later or whatever we wanted to.
You can always take it out too. I mean, this is still just a. Eight, six, three, right?
Eight, six, three. So that was the mult conversion to multifamily. We said no. And she talked about some adaptive reuse stuff.
Well, my only question is, how do you translate this? What does it mean? It's ability developing an adaptive resource ordinance. What's the adaptive resource ordinance?
Adaptive reuse. That could be anything. It could be multifamily, it could be office, it could be.
Well, could it be breaking it up into apartments, which we were against the first time?
Could be.
Right, but, but, and then you would create the ordinance, so if you're against something, you wouldn't create an ordinance to allow it. So an adaptive reuse ordinance typically takes older structures like mills, factories, older buildings, historic buildings. And allows people to adaptively reuse them in another fashion, whether that be live work units. You know, office space, apartments, however it be, but if the community doesn't want a certain use, they wouldn't allow for a certain use.
I take it though that the, the term adaptive reuse ordinance is a term that's.
It's a broad term that in, in our, in our field that we use for those types of ordinances that take. Again, older historical structures, mill buildings, factories, to allow people to reuse them in other ways. That are, that are sitting vacant or that are no longer in, in use.
To the best of your current knowledge, has anybody approached a town with such a proposal that would benefit from this being included at this time?
No.
Nothing yet on that front, okay.
We can, if there's concern about it still, we can strike it and then we can always, a year from now, I, I looked at Franklin's. Mrs. DeBoeran, and it seems like every year they do a one-page update, which is pretty cool.
A lot of towns.
And it was just said, hey, you know, last year we struck adaptive reuse, but after digesting it some more and seeing what other towns do, we want to add it back in. And then they, you know, they, 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 I think one of the pieces of language that Franklin just added this year. Was they said develop a diverse housing stock that meets the needs of young professionals, so they adapted. So if we're concerned about it, for now, let's get rid of it. And then in a year from now, when we, we, we have to do an annual report on it anyway, based on the way it's written, we can add these things back in as, as we, as we wish.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think there is potential there, but you know, it's also a risk with that kind of thing, so that has to be approached very carefully, purposefully, so.
I'm not necessarily against it. I'm just wondering, I'm not to be, to belabor the point.
I'm not necessarily against it, I'm just wondering, I'm, I'm not to be, to belabor the point, but I, I assume adaptive reuse ordinance is a terminology that is used in the industry or?
Yes, but it, it's not a one specific thing.
I understand that, yeah, but how is it defined? What's the, how, how would you define an adaptive reuse?
So it's an ordinance that would allow someone to take a underutilized structure and reuse it, adapt it and reuse it. So you would, could do that in a multitude of ways, whether that be housing, offices, live work units. There's, there's a multitude of ways you could do it. The community would decide when they draft the ordinance, how they wanna structure it. So if we wanna say that, you know, we're gonna take some of the old factories down here, and we're gonna make those only live work units, so you have to have that, or we're gonna only make those offices, we can do that.
Right. But again, I'm, I'm being picky here, but if we don't have this in here, what's to stop us from coming up with ordinance anyway?
Nothing.
Nothing.
So this is sort of.
So, so why don't we do this, why don't we, I mean, I.
Who, who would be responsible for the, you said the community would design the ordinance, who, who do you mean when you say that?
Could be anybody, it could be me, my office, it could be the planning board, it could be town manager, it could be a counselor, it could be a group of citizens, it could be a multitude of people.
So it just be proposed before?
The council has to propose the ordinance.
Okay, yeah.
Anybody could bring it to the council, a counselor to support it.
And then the council would vote on it.
Yes.
Do you wanna table this to our one-year review?
Not against it.
You wanna leave it?
I, I'd be in favor of striking it, but.
I mean, to Ray's point, I mean, you could still do it, you don't need it in there to do it.
Well, I, I, I mean, I, I'd be, this for us, let's make, let's, if it's, it's been controversial, let's table it. Do you guys wanna do that, or do you wanna keep it in there?
I, I was fine with keeping it in there, so. You know. You wanna go three times?
So we have one to table it.
I'll table it, just table it.
Table it, Ray. You're the deciding factor.
Let's leave it in.
Okay, so it's a tie vote.
I guess we'll just leave, like you said, it wouldn't ring, but make much of a difference being in there or not, so.
Well, and you have to remember too, just because it's in there doesn't mean you have to do it.
Yeah, it's just, it's just explore, so it's not the end of the world.
I, I, I get the language from like Duxbury, I looked at where Judy Barrett was the housing consultant at Duxbury on her own town plan. She was the volunteer, and that's how they worded it there. And so if we put it in the cultural, it's really not in housing anyway.
Yeah.
So. That's fine. It's gonna go into the cultural section anyway, right?
I believe so. They're the same section.
I gotta call after the meeting, one of the questions was, is a neighborhood office sell street that's a new neighborhood? This was a concern. And it has an eighteen hundreds house in it. So they said, well, what happens if they, somebody wanted to come to the town, they eighteen hundreds house, put an, an office building there? I turned that into four apartments in a single family zone, but I imagine if we had something that would say within a certain mile radius of downtown or something like that.
It could, it wouldn't have to, but it could. Also limit the, like you could say, it has to be in a building of this size, so it couldn't, it wouldn't apply to smaller houses.
Just, just like we do live work units, it has to be an existing building, ten thousand square feet in size, you can only modify it by fifty percent.
Yes.
Are there, so.
If anything like was, you know, proposed for that, would that come before us, as like a special permit or something like that, is that how that?
Typically, it would be a special permit.
Yeah.
In other communities, it's usually a special permit.
Rooftop solar? No one have any, any issues with that? Just saying it's explore.
But that's the only reason why I, I really left it, because you can't.
Yeah, I don't think.
You can't force people to do it.
I think it's gonna be a very quick exploration process.
You know, but it.
Inclusion Arizona.
You know.
Again, it's explore, right? Open space strengthened. Forty add district.
Actually, did you reach out to the attorney about that solar, by chance, did anybody reach out to the attorney?
Mixed use, we're just gonna say strengthened mixed use.
Yeah. Probably till Monday around noon, and I don't hear from anybody else, so everybody's all set with these.
So the master plan, I think we should have it on for a meeting, just to adopt it as a board, right? Public meeting and.
I just, since you mentioned that, bringing up the point which I brought up, I don't know, when we first started this, and that is that we seem to be the the power to be to with ma, with master plan in terms of initiating and reporting on it. So my question is, assuming the master plan is approved, who's gonna be reporting every year? Are we reporting to the council, is somebody reporting to us, how is this gonna, what's the process gonna be?
So I have, after, that's how I found Franklin's. So after you asked that question, I looked uptowns that do an annual report, and it appears Franklin does an annual report or an annual update. And it was simply an Excel spreadsheet with, here, here are things we thought about in the last year, and here are things we didn't like type of thing. I can pull it off and bring, you can grab it right online, just like I Googled, you know, master plan updates.
Yeah.
I think, and Franklin came up. It was very simple, it was a one-page report, I don't know if they give it to the town manager, I don't know.
Who's doing it?
It looked like the planning board.
The planning department, probably.
So, I mean, I think we'd ask our staff to update it, and we'd say, here are things we like, we don't like, we, you know.
So I think, I don't know if you remember Alexis's presentation last week, but I think there, there's been some discussion in town about the strategic planning committee of the council taking a large role in the implementation of the master plan, so I think they would have some involvement in the annual reporting of what's happening, if they're taking a large role in the implementation of the plan. And then I think it was indicated that maybe the town manager would be the one to do a state of, when he does a state of the town, to do like a state of the plan report as well, so. You know, the, the planning board adopts the plan, but there's nothing in the legislation that says the planning board has to be responsible for implementation. Because a lot of these items are not necessarily planning board.
But I did look at the state regs and it's, I understand what you're saying about implementation, but I, I, I read it that the planning board is supposed to do the reporting of, yearly reporting of master plan, how it's being implemented. So if that be the case, that's my question, how do we, how do we?
We could do it in a variety of different ways, you could.
No, but it's, it sounds like, again, the way I read it, it starts here. We delegate somebody or some group to gather the data for whether, whether it's happened in terms of the master plan implementation over the past year. And we report.
Yeah, so typically you would have your staff work on that for you. And they would go around to the different agencies that would be responsible for part of implementation and, and collect, what have you done this year? Where are you at on your implementation, put that together for you, and then, you know, every year the council asks the chairman of the planning board to come in and do a, a report, he could report out to the council at that time, or.
Right, but again, I guess what I'm saying is it starts here, it doesn't start with the council.
Correct.
So we have to, we have to put into our agenda over the next year or whatever, at some point in August of two thousand twenty-three, that we have to gather data to report to the council on the implementation of the.
But I think it could be just, it would just normally be a normal part of your practice. Like the idea, the goal is to have that become part of your habit, like, so that your staff is doing that as an ongoing process. And that, once a year, whether that's July, August, September, whatever timeframe you decide, the staff would come to you with like, okay, here's what everybody's done this year, and then you decide when you wanna report it out, so. That, there's, I don't think you need to have any sort of formal process for it, I think it's, it's, it's a.
Just falls on the regular board business.
Yeah, but I, I guess, yeah, I, I guess what I'm saying is, based on, again, my reading, we've never done this, we've never reported. We haven't reported it at all.
Plan implementation committee that Carlton was the chair of, and Carlton did most of that work, or if not all that work himself. So, you know, we didn't always do it the way the state legislation did it, because we had the master plan implementation.
Boston Street. I'm on the CPC and on the energy committee. There needs to be a way to report, and you need to speak with, I suggest the chair speak with the strategic planning committee, because they had a significant discussion about how this report would be done, how it would be done. And I think that they're talking about having the town manager, as, as was stated earlier, the town manager might put it in his annual state of the report. But he needs to have the data. So you guys need to drive that bus. And I think you have a very competent staff that can give you the information to provide to him, so he can provide it to the town. But I think it's something you should discuss when you put the master plan before your vote to the vote. I think you have, should have a significant discussion about that. And then also have input from the town council. So I suggest a one-on-one with the, the chairs of those two committees to, to actually work out a process, thank you.
Alright. Let me just throw one last comment, and then I, I, I take it then, when the master plan is approved, let's say the master plan is approved three months from now. Pretend. Then we should be setting a date, time forward, we should put on to our agenda a year ahead that we have to report, we, we go through you or whatever. That, that, in other words, all I'm saying is, we, we don't wanna go through the next year and say, oh geez, you know, we should have done this.
That, I don't believe that would happen, and we're, we're primed and ready to make this report of an actuality and not just put it on the shelf. So this, everybody in the staff level is ready to move this report forward, once it's ready. So I don't, I don't think use any fear of it not moving forward in a year.
I'm just, I'm just saying what our responsibility is here.
Right, and, and, and you have staff that will make sure that you take care of your responsibilities, and I think you need to put some trust in your staff.
And the other thing we need to decide is, we talked about this with Alexis, is that the, the EFR, the town is July to July, so we need to decide if we're gonna you know, every June we prepare, prepare a reporter, every November we.
That's all I'm saying, we should, we should decide what, what's the date is gonna be.
When is the state of the town address?
That, that's, that's the question I asked last year when they, last week when they asked about, when is this meeting gonna happen? And I, I said, is it first quarter, last quarter, second quarter? And that's when they, and that's when we brought, and that's when we brought it up.
But the state of the town addresses and.
It's, it's typical, excuse me, Carlton, again. It's typically done in the late winter, early spring is what we've done in the past, we haven't had it for two years because of COVID. There's also another way to deal with this, and the planning board is required to submit the, because the town council requires an annual report that every board, commission, committee, department, whatever, have to send a report in. So you can do it in that process, and that generally starts the first of January with the town clerk's office. So you've got a couple of options, a written report to develop something, but the bottom line is, as Jennifer noted, is you have to have some kind of structure to look and check off the boxes. And, and I'm more than happy to provide you guys with some ideas down the road, if you wish, because I ran the implementation committee for fifteen years.
Thank you. Any other board committee comments, discussions? So we don't meet again until May?
May fourth, we'll be remote.
And we got a couple of zoning things referred to us.
Yes, so last night at the council meeting, the zoning reclassification from Mark Roski was back, referred back to you. And there was a zoning ordinance prepared sponsored by Councilmore for the Clermont properties in regards to an over fifty-five allowing over fifty-five up their project on Pleasant Street, so that was also referred to you, it's EPC for joint hearing, so. I'll be reaching out to try to schedule some times for those. I need to find out when Mark Roski is available before I can schedule that one, so. You'll just hear probably hear from me next week.
Motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
By Mr. McDonald, second by Mr. Geller. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Was that spring?
This is better than remote, this is, this is better than going remote.